Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so you want to call your... ...first one up?
Where we're going, right in the beginning.
Georgia.
General Governor, right?
Yeah, so where do ladies want to start?
The beginning.
Okay. Yeah, whatever's easier, I'll bet that, let's try to get to... Alright, so the first item is...
What time did we start?
We started at, call it 10:50.
No, not...
9:50, sorry.
9:57.
You see, like, you said, you ran on, you ran on something right there, could you?
You're good though.
Alright. General discussion about salaries.
Okay.
The general discussion.
Yes.
Once we have this discussion...
Right, it'll be the same for all the way through.
Exactly.
Okay.
Oh, right, right, right.
Alright, so you, go ahead. Do you want to talk or you want to talk? No, I have sort of thrown to me, I was...
Okay, this is my first exposure here, so we'll go... My assumption is that we're not going to deal with the salaries, it's regulated through union contact with 2.5%.
Yeah, we have, what we usually do is we have non-salaries, so years have been different, correct me if I'm wrong, but we usually take on, like, everyone gets the same salaries, so if the unions, if the union's set for 2.5%, we usually do everyone else 2.5%, unless we felt some...
So that's, that's what's in here, is what I'm trying to say.
Oh, from non as well as union?
Yes.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Okay, so the salaries are basically not something that we're going to deal with, I assume.
Unless, so you have to...
We can always go back if there's an issue.
Did you have, you agree Bob?
Yeah, I don't know where we're going, but that's just normal.
No, that's fine, traditionally, whatever the reason is, that's what we do across the board, so that's what we're doing.
We're not going to deviate from normal.
Right, that's how they left it, that's how we left it.
Okay, so we're going to do, we'll start here at the town office building coverage. $8,500 was last year. The request is 8616, which is again the 2.5%, and we're 5,499 thus far into the budget. So I don't know if that needs to be looked at, that there's more coverage hours than normal.
That would be a question, is there a...
This year, there were...
Extenuating.
Right. I don't know what next year is going to bring, nobody knows what next year is going to bring.
So I assume that the 8616 would stand because we're going to wait and see what happens.
So the increase that happened for that, this current budget, not this one, was just an aberration?
Extenuating.
Right, okay.
Sundries is, excuse me, is the same thing.
But, but, well, are we putting a number then on the selectments request?
8616.
From the department, but then we have to put it in the selectments request.
Right.
We should copy the other one?
These are, these are just going to be copied over to the, to the left.
Okay, because I usually kind of write everything in, okay, alright. I just wanted to make sure.
I know a lot of this.
Sundries was raised 100 because Liz is new and there's various things that she might...
Yeah, we're going to host a Chamber of Commerce Division meeting here, we used to do it and we added, so we're going to host one meeting.
So you're asking, this will increase in that?
Yeah, I might not even need the whole 100, but...
But at this point, you want to put it in depending?
Can I back up a little bit, so all of those on the, on the top remain the same?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to be all the same.
Alright. Yeah, that, I know Bob enters them in his system every year and we compare after to make sure everything is...
Up in the upper left-hand corner.
Bob, can you make that any clearer?
Down at the bottom where the other star.
It's really fuzzy, no, it's fuzzy. You don't want the glasses.
You do it on the projector, you can focus.
There you go, that's better, thank you.
And I didn't bring my glasses, but I don't...
I mean, I know I'm fighting the cold today, but I think you guys are on that.
Sorry, I don't, I don't need them.
But you see where the star is, the red star?
Yes.
That's a total of that column.
Okay.
So as we enter...
It'll go.
It'll go.
Yeah, and then we can know.
And that's why...
You're so good.
Yeah, this is very good.
With Georgia saying that, each one, we know what the numbers are, but they got to go in, go in here.
Okay, see, I normally would do that and I'd do a cut and paste or copy and paste, but, but you don't have it because we've got historical data. You don't have what's...
You know, what's going to happen when we get through with this line item or this department?
It'll be the end, the total, yeah, we got you.
We'll vote on the total.
We're going to vote on the total, that's why Bob is there.
We got to know where it is.
The entry guru.
No, and then we make it easier instead of addition errors, so that's good. As long as your formula is right, Mr. DeVon.
No, here it is.
Well, this has been used for about four years.
I love it.
Okay. Barbara, well, are we going to wait until the interns are, we're going to go to...
I think, oh.
Oh, you sure? Okay. Alright, grants and programs, this was a combination, I believe EDIC or EDC
EDC.
Had a grant line and what we did is brought it all up here. Now, the reason there's a big reduction is the 11,000 included the interim that was doing the stormwater drains.
No.
No, he was, you know why, because his name is Storm. I'm sorry, okay. Whatever he was doing, he's completed. So we brought it down to the 4,000, which we think will be sufficient for the year.
It's under grants and programs, meaning we're, we're paying this, right?
Yes.
Does it cost to us, are we getting money for it from a grant or does this happen to be a grant program?
It would be a development of a grant, so it would be something that someone would develop and then we would ensure it.
So we can attempt to get grants in future?
Correct, that's correct. Professional development, we raised that also because Liz may have to have additional things that she'd like to attend?
But not much.
No, there's just been more, I think they're, they're doing more about doing more professional development type things, so we just left it there in case there's an opportunity. Pretty much everything else I've been doing has been free, so...
Oh, really, how about this...
But it's for the whole department, we have to pay into some of those things.
But it's for her departments, like for Ellis, who have something to do.
Right.
That covers.
Yep, that. Okay, mileage, as you see, in the past two years, I know he's got historical, but 1,604, $1,062. What was budgeted is 700, we have 565 penetrated already in this year, so the $1,000 may or may not be sufficient.
I believe that's lower because Melissa did not take mileage, so I think 1,000 is probably right, they did, lower than the last year, because of that. But I think that, so the 14 to be more, 15 to be more accurate to use the rate, right?
We signed off the one mileage, right?
Yeah.
Georgia, I did, and Melissa, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I thought you were going...
Only the last, it was only the last quarter.
So, so I think that's why it's low, so I think we're correct in going back to what it was prior, and 1,000 is right.
Yeah, I haven't even had that.
You know, it looks like an increase, it's really not an increase, it's kind of what it was before.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Well, and that's what I'm saying, you might look at, it might be, although the rate went down, the IRS rate went down to 57 after 54, so that may be an accurate number. Okay, dues, meetings and conferences, my assumption is this is for various dues, meetings, et cetera, for both, all the staff?
Yep.
So the 6450 is what was requested.
And we, we haven't gotten their prices yet anyway, or call again, all of those, we don't know by better.
But the meetings and dues, well...
Yeah.
Well, they're mandatory and you got to go and you got to pay the dues, but they changed the prices on us, so somewhat, somewhat guess, you know, we do best.
It is kind of a guess right now, so if it changes, we're going to have to adjust it.
I want to have one question.
What?
Board meeting payroll, is that considered a salary item?
Yes.
Okay, I got 188613.
Okay.
Make a motion for individual.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
I want a motion that we recommend total budget 613 to the Board of Finance as the second budget.
Can you say this?
I'll try.
Okay.
Okay, Finance Office, we just raised the same thing to 2.5%. Professional development is 700, at this point it's 250, but we haven't, I came on board in May and really haven't attended. I actually am a honorary member of GFOA Connecticut, so we don't pay for my meetings, but Georgia's going to be going and attending these meetings and they're very beneficial. So I think 700 is an accurate number. And mileage, the same thing, 400 because the two of us are going, so depending upon where we can cut costs, sometimes if I can go directly to my home, which is halfway here, I will do that, so I think 400 is fine.
Make a motion that we accept this for...
For Bob to call off with that?
I think he did, it was up there, that's why I started.
Oh, good.
Are you good?
Good.
Yeah, I want to make sure he was, make a motion to accept the finance budget for 137 to 64.
One second.
On favor?
Okay, probate court is a number that we're given, it's the 26661, which I believe we're going to use the same number.
Yeah, we haven't gotten an answer from them yet, though, but...
Well, did it usually increase?
When does that come, Georgia?
They haven't increased in the last two years, three years, they haven't increased. But I don't know what, what is happening with the state and what the...
If we do hear something different, we'll immediately, what, you know, I mean, because it's a number we have to put it in.
No, I know, I know it's meant, yeah.
Alright, so...
And they usually don't give us the information until we actually go to the Board of Finance meeting, by that time, you know, they're going to have to change up that real number.
I will make a motion to accept the probate budget to $2,661.
One second.
On favor? Aye.
Okay, election and wages were submitted, this is the budget they requested. The increase, of course, is the same.
What was the increase for?
Same, 2.5.
2.5.
We increased last year something, didn't we?
35 to 40, yeah.
Yeah, we gave some salaries. I think we approved higher salaries, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah. I think we approved higher salaries for the election.
Yeah.
Let's keep that in mind.
Didn't we get a letter in the fall or something?
Yeah, it jumped up like a dollar, I think in a half.
Yeah, just keep in mind that, that's why I like to stroke with that, because you forget sometimes. Some, some departments will actually increase in that every time, and so you got to remember a little bit how, otherwise you forget.
Do you want to keep it the same then?
No, 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 I mean, 40, 41, no, 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 I'm just saying, we made a significant jump last time.
You did, right.
Yeah, so just want to make sure we just keep it in mind, so.
Okay, food is for election services when they handle, so I mean, that's, we're pretty much 968 at this point, and we don't see...
We don't know, there's another referendum coming up for the school, right?
Yes.
So this year is kind of unusual, maybe a year, there's another referendum.
Well, we don't know that yet.
Oh, we don't know that yet, okay.
We don't know what it'll be.
Okay.
So it's a little bit over there.
Very well could be Georgia by the time June rolls around, but we, as of right now, we don't know yet.
So whether or not we go over, I'm not going to depend on it, but 1,500, we don't anticipate.
I think it'll be a timing issue.
I assume they have a reason why they want to triple the conferences?
Yeah, that was my next question.
Yes, they do, and that's where the backup comes handy, because he did send a letter. See, I've got to, I've got to go and get you the information to read it.
The state requires, you want to do that?
Yeah, he sent a, he sent a letter, and that's why he put the 4,000, because it's a requirement, and I don't remember exactly all the regards.
What I'm asking you, do you want to get the data now or do you want to just go through?
Do you know quickly where it is?
Yes, I do.
Then I, then let's just do it, yeah, I'd rather just get it, so we know?
Yep.
Because this way you can approve, it's comfortable, it's comfortable to put that right where it belongs.
And then if there's a, mean a lot of things, so we just go back.
Of course, case in hand, we just, we, we'd have to pass, we just get there.
Just continue on the, on the rest of the stuff and I'll catch up when I come back.
Okay. Alright.
Scanner adjustments are with those scanner machines, et cetera, and they kept it, they actually reduced it this year. And the Roback dues, these are things that they, I'm sure there's some information in the backup. Equipment, they went down, apparently they purchased some equipment where they were going to. Right now it's $100, they're requesting for next year, it was 700 because it was something that they did request, and they haven't spent it yet, so we'll have to actually, I'm going to ask that question. Election supplies is something that is necessary, we have to, have to keep it in, it's the same as last year. And the national change of address is another thing that they have to do, I believe yearly.
I want, you go back to the selectments budget, you know that, you know that spray can, air stuff they have?
Like aerosol?
Can we get the camera back there, maybe they spray it in the bag now? We get that, we know.
I mean, shiny.
I don't think they have silver, I think it just looks black.
Oh, is it, well...
If you go back to the old one.
As you can see, they raised this for the national change of address, because in 1415 it's 152. This year they haven't spent anything as yet, but I have a feeling it may be probably around 150 range anyway, so I would say the 150 is, if they know their business, yeah.
Alright, so wait, let's just put that, we'll just do that, okay?
Okay.
Let's do Board of Finance.
Okay, we chipped the auditors, they told us to budget the same number, and the secretary, of course, is the 2.5. And the usual consultant, we don't have anything. We actually spoke with Barry Benati, remember he said, and we're going to have a meeting, so...
Let's leave that for now.
Leave it for now, and because he doesn't charge for a lot of things, if we go out to me under bond, that's a different story. Total town report expenses.
I got a question on the secretary. Is this included, 10 cents an hour raise that we gave her?
Does it include the wedding?
The 10 cents an hour raise we gave her in...
In 1516, yeah, it was 3827.
She became assistant, assistant county clerk, then she got 10 cent an hour raise, and then it went back to this job too.
It did.
So this is included, so it is 39.
Let that's Georgia that, because I'm not so sure.
I didn't think it did note.
Yeah, I think it's separated for the time, that's why, that's what I thought, but Georgia can tell you for sure.
Yeah, but all I want to know is, is included.
It's the 10 cents is included on the finance. We'll, we'll check with her when she comes back. I didn't think it was, but we'll check. Town report expenses, $550, and I believe we haven't printed thus far this year, so we don't know what that's going to be, but Georgia said they are, they are charging.
Yeah, does that do anything different, that's just what they...
And that's very inexpensive, to be honest with you. We'll wait on that.
Yeah, let's just wait, let's just... So Assessor.
Okay, Assessor. Now, what we did was we made a little change here. If you'll see under printing, it went up to $1,450, because what was happening is the printing, it all came on one bill, so everything was put into postage, which is under central services. So what we did was we do, we reduced postage by the amount of the printing and put it where it belongs, under Assessor. Okay? So in reality, it's, it's a net zero increase, but it's in the correct budget, and we did the same thing for the tax part, okay?
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay. What happens in the past, they were taking this bill that was coming in from Vision, wherever she has, we have backup material on this as well, and they just took that whole bill and put it into postage, though it wasn't postage, it was postage and printing, and it really should be in printing and it should, it's the Assessor's responsibility, so we put it into this, but we netted it out of postage on the other side, that's all I'm saying, is we're going to...
So that, as postage increases or printing, we can keep an eye on what the differential is?
Right.
The increases are correct?
Yes. And the update maps, $500, which is something that they have to do, they update their maps, I believe on the GAS. And professional development, they have to go to school once a year.
Do you remember what was...
We're going to have to skip, I gave everything to Benny.
Oh, you can't find it. Reval, of course, is completed, I believe, so there won't be any, any expenses here. Pricing schedule.
I don't remember that much.
I don't either. And $1,000, do you want to know what this was, pricing schedule for the Assessor?
Oh, yeah, that's the, like, the Blue Book and the others.
Okay, so that's another name for it.
That's what that is.
That's for their motor vehicle, those that aren't, don't come in for motor vehicle assessed, they have to look it up. So they need the current Blue Book, and the $1,000 is current mileage for both professional development and, of course, when she goes out on inspections.
Alright, so this one should be...
That's the, that's just the meeting for, but... Something about that people actually license plates is...
Yeah, they've been enforcing that, yeah, yeah, they've been enforcing that.
That's very interesting.
Yeah, which they should.
Who would have thought of that?
Well, I'm aware of that.
Stuff like that, yeah.
I mean, yeah, they've been, they have been doing that.
Yep.
And you approve you, there are some people who probably do six months in the main for, probably in the gym or whatever. They're businesses too, it's like, you know, this, I was going to bring that up at that meeting, like, you know, searching the Secretary of State, you know, we had LLCs and people have...
Right, businesses and...
Good houses.
Be into their...
Businesses that aren't here, but they like to have them here because they like to use our transfer station. They're familiar with, somehow they have an address and have, they have a business in East Adam, and then they come over here and renovate a house and...
Well, we have to go by where the car registration is done for that.
Check it, because if they get, you'll let a car register...
If the car is registered here, though, and they're paying taxes here. So that wouldn't play, Sean, but with...
But for a business, it would, because sometimes, see, sometimes they pay per load or they pay refrigerator and stuff like that, so they'll, they'll come up where they have an address. It's hard to investigate, I'm not sure, generally it's the lowest lane, but, you know what I mean, so it's, there are, I, I, maybe I'll do what I say, I think I feel more comfortable, I think they're not... You somehow have an address and have it, and they pick up like an apartment or something like that, you register the car, you don't actually... Sometimes you only do appeal. Businesses, exactly, businesses somewhere else, they pay the tax and plot, they're, they're overusing it because they're renovators.
No, and there should be a real physical address when they're getting that, don't pass it out of your box or something. No, I think there's a lot of ways to address to increase the tax revenue, and we're working on that, but right now with tax collection and budgets.
What's the total, Bob?
Well, we will do permanent.
Yeah.
The town mileage, yeah, that, that's, I think, pretty standard.
What did they use this year though?
117.
Probably hasn't put in.
What changed? Okay, yeah, I, yeah.
Because I don't have the numbers.
Do you have, Bob, for the issue? I'll put a question mark and we'll ask them.
You know about the salary numbers wrong? It's 73791, that's the, that's your, and the, both of the wages need to get updated.
Yeah, right here, just put it.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so, so you have the same?
Yep.
Alright, so the Assessor's budget.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Assessor's budget, 12536. We got discussion here.
No, 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 you have to vote.
I thought you wanted to go discussion.
Sean, you have to vote. Who's second?
I'll say.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Now you want to go back, to which one, Bob?
Well, we just didn't vote.
Yeah, we had a question.
Well, we had a question for Georgia.
Right, but I don't have the backup to show you, but I remember that he did put in that it's the new regulations through the state of Connecticut that they have to do more.
So why don't we just, and I could have, he copies me in on stuff, so I can, why don't we just put it aside and then we'll do it the next time?
Okay.
I'd rather, it's, it's a differential, so I just feel more comfortable having the backup.
Did you vote on the Board of Finance?
No, because we had another question.
Okay, so now we're doing Board of Finance?
The question was, what, Robert Gallow got 10 cent ready for working in the... It wasn't 10 cent, it was like 7 cents or, or...
Okay.
Yeah. But did it, is it reflected here as well, or is it just...
Oh, it is, so she, she went up 7 cents an hour on this budget as well.
And both sides.
Right, plus the 2.5, right.
Yeah, 2.5, post, 2.5 from the increase.
Yeah, if you look, if you look in the, here, in the wages, that I gave, you'll see the difference. Let's see. 8 cents, actually, was like 8 cents. She was getting 1492 before and then she went to $15, so I took the 15 times 2.
2.5 to 15, you get 15.38. Okay, so that, we can vote on Board of Finance. 4395, we recommend...
And we, did you mention, Barbara, that we did call the auditors?
Yes, I did, I did vote on that, yes, I did, yep.
Okay, I'll second Sean's motion.
Go back to motion.
Sean made the motion, I seconded it, on favor?
Aye. And the total, Bob, agrees with what we have there?
I don't want to get confused, so elections came before... So elections came before...
Oh, they did, oh, yeah, yeah, I have that, thank you. Yep, hold on, guys, one second.
All right, word of assessment appeal.
Okay, they put in the same budget numbers. But my question is, revale is this year, correct?
It was, they are working on it.
They're working on it, yeah.
But for 2015, the grandest of 2015. I don't know what the past experience is, but usually I read that. There's more appeals, so I don't know. I mean, the chairman put in the same amount, so I'm assuming that that's, he knows.
Yeah, they don't charge, I mean, I think they just do, right? They don't charge.
But they just get like a stipend, nothing at all, in case of development.
They're less volunteer.
And then it goes, and if it goes like a legal matter, then.
And leave goes into.
Yeah, the only thing that they're using is just that they have to take some classes. That's what that professional development.
That's a nice thing. We pay ours.
Oh, you do, yeah.
Volunteers are saving us in this.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. Okay, who's making the motion? I'll make the motion to pass $310 for the board of assessment appeal budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, tax collector is the same scenario for the salaries. Mailing services, that's something that she goes out and again gets her list verified by the postal service. Professional development, she's going to, she put extra money in because if that, her position assistant tax collector gets filled.
That's what he's gonna, okay, I know how that's.
No, we're working on that.
But whoever comes in may need additional training. Motor vehicle put-ons, that has been reduced drastically with the motor vehicle upgrade, I think.
Are you anticipating that there's, anticipating there's assistant tax collector for the whole time?
I am, because I'm looking at how different job descriptions are done. So I'd rather go high right now, Sean, than go low. I'm not 100% sure how that's all gonna pan out.
Okay, now here's another one that we increased that I explained to you about the assessor. We split the bill, the printing of the tax bills and the rate book are under the tax collector, so that's why there's the increase, but we decreased postage under central services. And the mileage.
Switch things around, basically.
Yeah. And the mileage.
When will that come up, that postage reduction, what budget will that show up on?
On central services.
And the numbers, well, just so we, I want to keep track of each deduction, the numbers are pretty much, the exact additions are gonna match the deduction, right?
They match the invoices, which actually are in backup data, you'll be able to see it.
Yeah.
Okay, and a thousand dollars for mileage is again, if in fact the assistant has to go to classes, of course, there's mileage that has to be used, so that was an increase.
We're assuming assistant would have to then go.
Yeah, there's, well, there's mandated training they have to do.
Oh, wait a minute. 96, 906?
986. No, that's right. Can you see it?
Yeah, it is.
It's an eight. And I know it looks deceiving, but it really is.
Same bond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I bring my eyes.
No, it's, you know, eight zero.
To be able to see that, so.
Yeah, it is, 96, 96.
I'm gonna keep on asking them during. So who made the motion?
Nobody yet.
Oh.
I'll second.
Yeah, and just for discussion, so what, um. So we're just preserving, should I figure, we're just assuming that we gotta post assistant for that salary? And if we, I guess we just put it there, we don't know, we don't know if someone's gonna.
Kristen looked to other towns for a job description. There's a few things that I think we can add into that position that aren't necessarily getting taken care of. So she didn't want to do anything right now, because the tax bills just went out and she's in craziness. So once the month of January is over and all the tax bills are in, then we'll have an opportunity to sit and discuss. And I have them working on job descriptions, so we can look at overlapping. So I didn't want to change anything or cut anything. I just figured, let's just leave it alone for now until we know what we have, and then we'll work it from there. I mean, obviously, if I can do for something less, then we're gonna do for something less. Okay? All right, wait, we did vote, we have to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Treasury office, the increase, as we've spoken before. Mileage has stayed the same. Right now it's 107, so that's pretty much on course. Now, we increased the bank charges. We're dealing with the bank, we have some issues with that. In the past, bank charges have been waived by the provider, the bank that we have. They're no longer doing that.
Delivery?
No, assistance. However, we did have them in, and we are renegotiating some of the fees. The fees, the way they stood on the analysis was like $946 a month.
It was substantial.
Yeah, so we are looking at different banks, we're looking at, we're trying to do whatever we can to mitigate the change. She put in 2,000, I think that might be a little low, but if she feels that we can negotiate something with Liberty that may stand.
Yeah.
We're really dealing with it, so right now it's just a placeholder, and we know it's gonna be more. There's no question.
Okay, but no other, do you have an option of farming another bag?
We have that, so.
United, we've looked at Webster.
Liberty.
Dunbar.
We don't know if we're gonna waive it for the business.
We don't know yet.
You don't know?
They needed, yeah, they needed our numbers and the volume that we do so that they could figure out what, and if any, things were gonna be charged.
Yeah, they have the analysis at this point.
Yeah, they have everything they need to do it.
Right.
And then, you know, by the time it does go to the board of finance, we'll have a good number.
Yeah, on this, Tom, you remember when your position was created, there was talk about eventually phasing this, this position out over time. That's still a discussion?
What do I?
I mean, I remember when we first discussed, we go into discussion of hiring, there was a talk of like, at some point, putting individuals aside, the position itself.
Yeah.
Where that should not be even phased out.
Right, and that falls under charter revision, so that is.
I'm not saying threatening that.
No, 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 but.
Eventually, the position itself.
But to the point, to look at what people are doing in their job descriptions and everything, that needs to be done. We're way behind in some of the HR things, so that's why I'm having them figure everything out, and then we can look at things as a whole. And I think when it comes up to charter revision, then they can look at that piece and see.
Well, you'll be a big part of that discussion too, because like, all more work follows and you're.
Yeah.
I just remember hearing that, like, you know.
Yep, no, good question.
Motion? Motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the Treasury's 16379.
I'll say.
All in favor? Aye.
Can you, after the meeting is done, could you stay behind for a couple of minutes? I need you to sign some paperwork for United Bank.
Near.
Here.
Of, of?
Of, of, of us, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I still leave 11:30, I'm so.
Okay, you'll sign before you leave, Sean, thank you.
Okay, town council.
I, we pay per hour at this point. It was kept level. I don't know, you know, one never knows what's gonna appear on the horizon, so. Just put it in as a, as a marker. And right now we're 14, 403. Labor council, we up that.
You kind of work with the.
Right, right.
You're comfortable with that?
I am, I am, I mean, I have a few little things that have been coming through that I think are a waste of money, but I'm not, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay, the labor council, I believe the contract's coming up for renewal.
It is, yeah.
So we up that, because there's going to be hours that are gonna be spent for that whole process.
Okay, so could more, look more like the 213, 14? When was the last time?
It could be, it depends. I think they cleaned up a lot of, the last time, the last contract.
I do remember that, that was more expensive negotiation.
So maybe that's why, so it should be less cumbersome.
Yeah, okay.
But.
How long was the contract?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years, we're coming up on the 3rd.
Yeah, they gotta start working on it in the 17.
Oh, it's gonna expire in June of 18. Well, whatever, we approved it in August, definitely. Well, it was right, we approved it in August, but I think went back to July 1st.
Yeah, yeah.
So June 30th is when it ends.
Yeah.
And, I'm saying.
Well, we knew what they were gonna have to start working on, and at the end, it's one of those things that's gonna maybe cross over into next year.
And it's just gonna say it's probably a crossover in just three years.
Because we went through this about different years and laying it down, so that's why we put the 10 in, because I think it's gonna be a timing issue. But it's gonna be up to negotiate again, so we obviously have to start working on negotiating it before it's time to do it.
Yep.
Okay, PMZ council is 15. The reason there's so little here is because the season is not applicable to, you know, but the spring is gonna bring in more activity. And bond council, pardon me?
It's a yes.
Yeah.
It's a yes.
And bond council is 10,000 we put in here, because we are looking, and I think this is.
To bond.
Yeah, to be, either band or bond, depending upon what. For roads, for various projects.
So this is a, this is an expenditure to what you're anticipating. You're gonna need legal advice on, I know it's coming out.
Yeah.
And that might be a loan number, depending on, that may be a crossover.
And I'm also, and I'm working on that now, because of, you know, just having eight weeks. So again, we put a number in there now, because I know I'm gonna need something for discussion so that you're aware of it, and then the time comes if we need more for board of finance.
Are there like, specific bond council, or can, or one of the other legal council use for bond council?
Well, that's what we're looking at, too. So the town traditionally had used a legal bond council for their bonds, but one of the reasons that I hired the firm that I did was because they can accomplish some of those things. So I'm trying to just still decipher who does what on that piece.
Sure. But you definitely need a bond council.
We do, we do.
There's no question.
No, that we know. And there's other options that we've been looking at in that area. So there's three options that are available there. All right, so that should be 60,000.
I'll make a motion, accept 60,000 if you can.
One second. Any discussion? Right, I'm in favor? Aye. All right, town clerk.
Conferences stayed the same. Same thing with the record books and maps. Stayed the same on codification maintenance. And we kept that in, because we had a discussion about this. There's a company that provides our codes online.
Yeah.
And there's a lot to that, it's maintaining, it's almost like a support and service fee, but they're supposed to be updating it, and we're looking into that to see where we stand. There are some questions, but we need it done anyway, and the 1,200 was what it was last year, so.
Do, I have a question, we'll go back to, did, I know we're doing two and a half percent, I'm just curious, and a person, is this what Scott requested? Or did he actually request only two and a half percent, or we just put that in? So I'm curious, because almost every year we get a town, usually we request for more. Of an increase. And so I make sure I don't, that's not.
In the letter, in the memo that we sent out, you tell them that wages would be determined by the.
And so I make sure that he, if we're saying he requested, so we should be actually requesting that.
You mean Mrs. H used to request.
You got it, absolutely.
Yeah, Scott, Scott did not.
Did not, you got it.
Yeah, he left a blank, right.
So you see, so by default, by not responding.
It goes, it goes, right. He didn't request more.
And do the same thing to 180. Election services, the same as last year, level statistics, same as last year. So he kept things level, other than the salary, of course.
Just for your information, Sean, if he did.
Yeah.
It would be under the department request.
Yes, I mean, yes, I'm saying, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so I saw a department request, I said, well, I.
We don't change, whatever they put in, that's what we put in, yeah. I mean, we, by meaning, when we update the department request.
The records, books and maps is, what, what expenditures are, you've got up from, had to expand in 2013, it was triple.
They're all digitized right?
Well, they were digitized back then, I don't know.
On 1,500? I thought you got a sister number.
Isn't that with the, like, the binding and?
That's all the, the filings, et cetera, and the requirement to, to hand the books, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, 13, 14 expended 1,500. And then it went up, because I thought we did some, actually, extra work, and then we did some particular, and then we're down to 216 this year, or so far this year.
So far this year, right.
Back up to 4580, actually, the way, do you know what it particulars for?
Well, I think you have to understand that probably one of the reasons is there's, there's issues in that office regarding illness, and things may not be.
Up to date.
Up to.
Got you, absolutely.
So I think that's a part of why it's so low.
On that, companies that store, because I've talked to some other towns that, you know, they, it was kind of like a, I won't call it a bait and switch, it was kind of like a bait and switch. These companies came in when you digitize everything, you store it, but now when you got it stored, what was the, what's the, you know, storing it? But it's, it's, they got you.
Oh, you know, the item?
And I hear that they're gonna start, they're gonna start jam everybody, yeah. They got everything there, they're storing it, they gave you a nice little price to come in, and I heard that now they're gonna start to gouge. So you gotta be careful, see if you can find other places to store it. Because now it's required to store it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and there's not, it might be a situation, you talk to legislators or something, because we're required to store it. And I believe, I talked to some other towns that know these companies, they're saying.
Yeah, now they have you, then they're taking that.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll, we'll.
So it's gonna be something to be out of control soon.
Okay. Do you have a chance to put everything on bond?
Yeah, I've got 107, so three in behind.
Thank you. So you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, accept the town first budget, 1739, do you recommend?
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Guessing we had our discussion, I made a note to find out about that, Sean, I'll look into that. That's kind of, it's very frustrating when people do that. All right, public buildings.
As you can see, the second line, each 20 rental and the lawn maintenance, we combined all of this into one line, they've been all over the place, so that's why the increase. And as you can see, we've expanded. that's why the increase, and as you can see, we've expended today over the $1,100.
Right.
So, again, we're trying to consolidate these things so that they all go in one place, and we know what the heck is going on because we've had given different line items.
So you're reducing it, another line item.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, the alarm, where is that at, here?
In every, in every building, we have them, and here.
What about the museums, that alarm suffered, or is that part of the?
That's separate, it's included in here.
Does he ask for money?
It's included in here.
It's in here.
Oh.
So down there, it's taken out, even though it's, it's an old line item.
Right.
That's not, what, what do we get there? Oh, yeah, keep that, didn't they ask for, didn't they ask for money for the, so we're, so this one, should we?
Yeah, they, they asked for 450.
They asked for.
They asked for 450 for the maintenance, see, they don't pay for the monthly.
Monthly.
Myers controls giving it to them free, but every year they have to maintain it, they come in and they maintain it. Last year, we paid, I mean, this year, we paid 300. The committee put in 450, but we took for 16, 17, and we took it out of their line and put it in the public buildings. Let's see, it's a 109, right, for Veterans Museum? Right, it's zero, but we took it out of their, their budget and included it here in the public building area.
Okay, so everything's here now.
Yes, with the exception, the only one that doesn't belong here, did we put in the tax collectors as well? Let me check on the 1090, the central services. Yes, it's included in there, we put everything in there because it's zero in the alarm system under the, the central services. And the same thing happened with the.
Rutherford removal.
All the buildings are here, yeah, yeah, everything is in one line.
Well, that was the purpose of this whole section.
Exactly, right.
You know, we're doing it slowly, but slowly we're, we're getting everything together, so it's concise.
Just want to make sure we did it.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't, a little sense didn't fall out someplace.
We don't think so, but. We think we grasped everything. The telephone. Okay. The reason we kept it the same is we want a year to shake everything out, we have a new phone system, it's going to be less expensive. But there's other things that we, we want to make sure of before we reduce it to a point where, we don't have any history, in other words, for the new system. So we kept it at 17. Which, and we're 9375 already in, in the year, but we're hoping that with the new system that that's not going to go up to the 17,700, 17,700, so. Again, that's your discretion, but I really think we need a year under our belt to determine what really is the actual budget. We've already had, you know, there's some costs and another unit was added, so.
Taken into consideration.
The cell phones are included in there as well.
So do you think, so it needs to be as much, Barb?
I, again.
I mean, I, I agree, have a, keeping it because we don't know, but I don't know.
We can reduce it if you, if you choose, I mean, I don't think it's.
But it's not just the phones, it's not just the phones, it's the cell, cell phones are in there.
Yeah.
Also the fire departments. What do they call them, the, the communication lines.
Yeah.
Are included in there, so it's everything. And head of nets.
Is in here.
The registrar of voters' phones, everybody's are included in there. However, we are getting a better deal on this new phone, but we don't, we don't have all the buildings.
Right.
Under that, so we are still paying a pretty high price for the rest of them, that, like, registrar of voters', town garage.
And we also have dedicated lines that we had to keep.
Yeah.
So the dedicated lines, you know.
Two, two dedicated lines here.
That's why I'm, I'm saying, we're really.
Yeah, we don't know yet what the differential's going to be for the lines that dropped off. So.
And, and by the time it goes to the Board of Finance.
We're going to have some idea.
Yeah, all right.
As to what we, because they just went live yesterday.
Yeah.
So we're going to have maybe a month or two.
Then that will help.
To see what's happening with them. And I don't know if Frontier is going to increase, that's the other thing, I don't know what, because we had a contract and they didn't want to.
Yeah, when you have a project with everything and then you split it.
I know, it's necessary, right.
Prices go up for the dedicated mine, so again, my feeling was, just for this next year.
Yep.
I mean, if you want to reduce it to 16,000, I, I would probably, but I don't want it.
I was thinking 15, I wasn't thinking of going crazy, but I think 15 is probably realistic.
Okay, so you want to reduce it to 15?
Yeah, 15.
Assuming heating oil is a consolidation as well.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Of course, we were not in the winter yet, we haven't paid any winter bills, but oil prices are down, so.
But I mean, you know, we must have had it separated back then, obviously.
Yes, actually, not going to be able to tell there, but.
Yeah, this was all combined.
But who knows what's going to happen next year, we're talking about next year.
But that, so, yeah, good, that's, well, you know, what? We adopted budget, 15, 16, we didn't adopt, that's, that's not right. We didn't adopt that, 15, 16. Yes, we did, because. We separated though, with different. What he did, what he did was he took all of, all of the appropriated numbers from wherever they were. And added it in here, because when I'm going through this thing, I kind of came up with. Yeah, I kind of came up with the same idea, you there, what, what happened here, what's going on? And that's when I found out what he did was, he took all of the budgeted numbers for all the places where he took this. And came up with, he added them into this one number. So, because one of the things, I was talking to Joe in the summertime, and one of the things he was concerned about was traceability, to lose it.
Right.
So, there is traceability to go back to where all these things came from, and what we paid, and the whole, yeah.
When they were entered, they're entered into, by, by location.
Yeah.
So. And propane, of course, you know, the same, propane is propane, not much you can do with that one. Electric, which is going up. So that, we're 43, 324 at this point, of course, when something, when the spring comes, we're going to have less electric, we don't, you know, daylight savings type, et cetera, but.
We have our condition.
Right, 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 so. I think that's a, a good number. And street lighting. By the way, the 43, 324, does that still include the street lighting?
Yeah, I have adjusted it up.
Okay, what happened was, there was some miscoding on that particular line, so that 43, 324 is going to be less, and we're going to make the adjustment into the street lighting, where it belongs. The billing was done. Not appropriately, in the, the appropriate account. So there'll be a shift, but.
But the, the total. But the total altogether.
Correct, should be, should be the same.
I got 257, 474.
Of course, they're going to get one, yeah. So you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept 274, 474. Also for public buildings.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
This next one, of course, is out of town office building, it's there because of the numbers for the prior years expended. So that's out, the same thing with the next one, office building annex. Planning and zoning has. I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. So because you moved them, do you want to, I guess, Georgia, do you want to eliminate these, or you want to just keep them?
Well, they've got numbers, so we're going to keep them.
Because that's how we balance, you know?
Not a problem, so we're approved, so I'll make a motion that we approve town office building, 065 town office building. Electric expense, 066 town office building, covers zero.
We need to get a approval?
You're leaving it, because you want to keep it in, so you're going to do the zero, right?
Yeah. Right. Yeah, yeah, okay.
So 066 town office building, Rutherford removal, he's putting it as zero.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
As soon as these actual strap off, we'll drop those off.
Right.
Planning and zoning. We're relying on the chairman attending in those numbers. And he kept the 7352 the same, and $200 was requested, apparently. 250, nothing's been sent thus far, but again, it's not the season yet, so there may be conferences that they have to attend.
That was received.
Yeah. For the car, for the rental thing?
755.
Yeah. Make a motion to accept, P and Z is $7,552. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
PEA, we put in the same number as the prior year. Right now, they expended the 90 dues and meaning, so that was paid out for the year.
Okay.
That's it. Motion to accept, $700, $700.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, are you good? Are we going too quick, are you all caught up? I wasn't paying attention.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure you're good.
It's quick.
It's speedy.
You have one line, I have one.
You have horrible favors.
One on nine, am I, did we, did we get caught up? Pretty impressive, working on yourself.
Okay, engineering, 50,000, same as last year, and that's there because right now it's 14,270, but the, the season hasn't started in regard, and also engineering, if you want to do some projects, you have to pay it out.
Right.
Sorry, it's, it's higher, it's higher than the actual expended from the last two.
Yeah.
But you believe, there's a need for an increase because you're anticipating, okay. Anticipating projects which are going to need additional engineering.
Yes. And just, you know, because of, again, timing and things, so I do, I very much don't think that's a good number.
Okay, Wetlands, same thing.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Who, who's making?
I, I will make a motion to accept engineering budget for $50,000.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Wetlands, same as last year. Yeah.
I'd make a motion to accept Wetlands, budget request of $100. I'd recommend that. All right.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, central services. Mr. Winkler, can I tell you?
Sure, yeah.
The 1,500 for the web updates.
Yeah.
I think that was because we maybe.
Wanted to up.
Upgrade the website.
The website.
Which where?
Web, under central services, the first one.
The web up lines, the very first line?
Yeah.
And the payroll process.
So we've had, we've had maintenance, and now we want to go a lot of maintenance to actually upgrade.
We haven't, yeah. We haven't had ma, I mean, it's just, just to kind of snazz it up a little bit, tie some more links in and do some things. And some things we can handle, but some things, that's just our expertise.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm done, sorry.
That's all right. Payroll processing, of course, though, we have an outside service, so we increased it to 7,800. The 29, 993 is for payroll weekly, but we've got W2s and 1099s, et cetera, so that cost is going to be coming shortly.
And they knew, I see the regulations coming up.
Right. Alarm system monitoring, as you can see, it's gone because it's in the other line item.
Under the building.
Building. Professional development. I think it was budgeted, and removed that as well. Equipment. 2,500 same as last year, right now we're 13,70, halfway through the year. Legal notices are down.
But P and Z, that's what we talked about.
Yeah, that went over to the. Stationery and office supplies, as you can see, we're halfway through, so that should stand the same as last year. Postage, here's the reduction that we took out, putting in the both departments for the printing, so we reduced that to 13,100, 13,100. Computer maintenance.
Is that a contract?
What's a contract?
The computer maintenance. We pay a contract.
Yeah, we have a consultant that we pay hourly.
Okay.
To, and.
This seems consistent for computer maintenance over the years, it's, you know, if it's pay, sometimes we pay X amount from, or we do it, or you actually pay him for, when you need.
When we need him, well, he comes in, you know, I mean, if we need him to come in for an emergency, he does, but, you know, it, it's one of those things, I think we're starting to look at big picture. I mean, if somebody has a computer problem right now, they come see Georgia during the day, and if it's a quick little thing, you know, it doesn't make sense to call or not, and we all don't mind helping, but I'm looking at just the big picture overall as to how our technology works, what do we need, what do we not need? Do we need more hours, do we need less hours?
Right, and if that turn the salary, you can get something for.
Right, right.
That's not, that's not what that person gets.
Yeah.
What this includes is maintenance for the systems, the software systems that we have, assessors, tax collector.
Tax collectors.
Business office, land use, and building department.
Those are all outside services that provide.
Those are all outside, we pay a fee to. Combined under one umbrella. The, if, yeah, if we had a full time.
The software in here?
Yeah, yes.
So it's more than maintenance.
It's a top blur, it's a main tech.
Right, and we talked, didn't we talk about renaming that?
Yes, with the IT.
IT, you're right, IT.
Yeah, like, we renamed that.
Yeah, we don't rename that.
No, because it's, it's not, it's, it's misleading as to what it is.
I changed it on the department request, and I forgot to change it here, so the, the name will change.
So what did, I forgot, what, Georgia, what did you?
Um, trying to remember, I think it was IT slash support maintenance.
Well, is it some of the, look at it, please, that, that particular area.
No, well, I have a meeting, actually, a meeting with Susan Bransfield in Portland next week to look at what they do. And just trying to get another, you know, another opinion.
We also have someone coming in taking a look at the overall picture, too, a consultant that will do it for nothing.
There's so many, you know, Sean, there's so many upgrades, I mean, you know, the telephones are in, I've had people looking, you know, we have issues with the alarms, and looking at these big picture, and it doesn't make sense to piecemeal it. I mean, I don't want to do something and find out that this company needed X, and if I knew to do Y, then if we did Y over here, it would have been more cost effective to do it here, so that's what we're trying to get a handle on. As far as the IT support of what we have, it's been working, but to be honest with you, Georgia's, you know, becoming our in-house IT person sometimes, and it's taking away from her getting her work done, so I'm just trying to fix that best I can.
Okay, office equipment maintenance is also contractual on various pieces of equipment. It's, um, same as budgeted the prior year, as you can see, was eighteen hundred and fifty-four and four, thirteen fourteen, and it was, um, what am I hearing, sixteen twelve, so it ranges, but the two thousand is placeholder for the, right now there's just nine hundred. But that, maybe some contracts haven't been paid out yet. No.
It's not a big bad day, computers, you know, it might sound like a kooky idea, but, um, if I recall, you know, the library comes in, they have a pretty high single budget, you know? Since we fund them, make a discussion with them.
To share somebody? That might not be a bad idea.
Because I think they got a pretty high computer maintenance budget, too.
Okay.
We pay that, so.
No, not a-
Opportunity for discussion.
Right, well, that, and that's what, and again, that kind of goes back to job descriptions and what people are doing, right? Making sure that we're putting all the resources where we need to. And, you know, if I can make it be more consistent and cut back in some places, I think it makes sense, so.
Or even, uh, even family services, same thing, it's not, you know, it's computer maintenance, I know that you think family services has one, too, so it's pretty partially funded, but just maybe a discussion.
No, no, and then that's exactly what I'm trying to look at, so that's a good thing.
Okay. Maintenance of town property buildings?
All right, so this has me very concerned. So we have expended, oh.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars of that money already.
And, and we do have, um, encumbrances. So what we've got left is a lot less.
What falls under this? What, what is it?
Anytime they need, um, anytime any one of the town properties needs any type of maintenance.
Is it, is it salary in here?
No.
Okay.
No, it's like contractors, so let's say we need a plumber to come in for something, we need an electrician to come in for something.
Okay, so it's outside, outside, kind of, not-
Yeah, so, or something leaks, like I, you know, there's water damage up right now, and it's been there, from what I understand, for forty years, although I'm not sure. That's being stretched a little, but for a long time upstairs in the old town hall, like where the masons are, there's, you know, I think there's an issue with the faulty chimney and causing water problems. So, you know, every, uh, what's happened is every time a new selectman comes in, uh, you know, they're coming in and saying, well, this has never been fixed, it's never fixed, and I think that certain things, you know, I, I don't know how long we've been band-aiding things for, I'm trying to get, you know, some back history on some of those issues. It seems like for some things, we've been band-aiding for a long, long time. So what is it gonna cost to really fix it, to not continue to band-aid it, but at the same time, you know, we can't go out and spend money we don't have. So I'm concerned about maintenance of town property and buildings, I mean, the town buildings are old, and they're needing more and more updating, um. I think when we, you know, we switched in some of these lights with LEDs, so that'll help to save, you know, some money. Um, but I'm concerned if fifty thousand dollars is enough, considering that we only have.
We have eighty-eight hundred left.
Eighteen hundred left, and we're only in the month of January.
But those are unpredictable, right?
They are unpredictable.
I don't know.
They are unpredictable.
And so falling under here is not our employees' maintenance, it's, it's only if we have to go to outside sources to maintain, maybe repair.
Correct.
It's more repair, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's kind of fluctuating.
Right.
Well, on the C N R side, there should be a hard look at, at some of these things, you know, so.
Because I think some of them can go under C N R, but I'm trying to get a good handle on it.
But there's just some burdens since every time you turn one?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. And some people have had, like, P O's to do things, so, you know, I'm trying to really rein in who's doing what, who can spend what. Um, we're questioning everything when it comes through, I want backup. But there were some things that came through that, you know, were already approved and we paid for them, so that's where I'm left. Um, I'm, I'm trying to not go over that number to have to go to the board of finance, obviously, if something comes up, we're gonna have to do that. But, um, I, I don't know, I think if we even up to, at ten thousand dollars, I feel a little bit better. I hate doing that, but it, it's one of those things. Unless we leave it alone, and if something comes up, we, I go to the board of finance and we ask. But I'm trying to figure, what do I fix, what do I not fix?
Right.
And I don't want to be in that position.
Yeah, you know.
Can we, can we put the fifty in? But before we conclude.
We could, yeah, go back and see where we're at.
Because, you know, we're going down line by line, maybe there's something down the bottom that's gonna kill us or something, and, or maybe we're gonna save a lot of money on something, I don't know.
Right.
So I'd rather we put the fifty in now, and then, before we're done, we can come back and visit it, because somebody's gotta keep some notes, but, and then maybe we can up it like you're saying at that point.
Yeah.
You're, you're correct, you know, because there's different advocates for different buildings.
Correct.
People that'll come to you all the time.
Correct, and, and, and I need to listen to what they have to say and be respectful of that, but I need to also look at the big picture, and what can go, what goes in as an emergency that we have to do now, and what can go into C N R, I mean, we have to look at that, and again, it goes back to big picture. So, you know, if it costs something, like, take, take the roof in the firehouse, for example, it, it got repaired, but the actual issue, what caused the water to leak, didn't get repaired. So now we're having that repaired. So certain things, and because of what's covered under insurance and what might be covered under, uh, you know, initial, like faulty, whatever term they use, construction, certain things we need to pay for or not. And even with the improvements going out at the firehouse, we have to cover five thousand dollar deductible. So even when insurance might pay for it, you know, I'm needing to come up with maybe a little bit extra money, or cover some of those deductibles. So, I, that's fine, we can leave it, I just want you to be aware, though, that there's, I'm trying to incorporate a list and look at, again, what needs to be done, and what we can put under C N R, we will.
Somebody won't put in there.
We'll put fifty, and I think, I think that's fine, as long, as long as we can go back and look at it.
Yeah.
Copy machine supplies, as you see, we're a little over halfway, that's for paper. Um, we won't have to be paying for a plumber up here, but there, there's other machines that we have to pay and, and various supplies. It's the same as last year. And building supplies, the same thing, those are things that you need to have on a yearly basis. Uh, computer supplies, same, same scenario, print, um. I think the ink comes out of there, right? Copying supplies, this is mostly paper, and this is the ink, you know?
No, there's computer supplies, it's if we need cords, if we need, uh, switches, uh, anything that-
The hardware.
Hardware, right, okay, right.
Hardware for computers.
Right now, we are okay at six twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Our, our computers are getting older, I mean, the last time we upgraded, it was two thousand and nine. Um, a couple of people got new computers, um, you know, one person two years ago, or a year ago, and then we're getting one computer, but most, most of them, they need to be upgraded. So every time you upgrade, you need different equipment.
And also with this consultant coming in, looking at the global picture here, you know, we have a lot of issues with wiring in this building, and, um, you know, there may be some things that we just have to bite the bullet and take care of.
I don't want to spend money. Okay, so is it okay if, since we don't, I want to go back and address that, are you okay not voting on that for now, so it reminds us to go back to address that?
Oh, okay.
Well, I should vote on it, but I can have some notes in there.
Yeah, I, I, I know, I know.
You know, basically.
I just don't want to not.
Well, it's gonna get, let me tell you this, it's gonna get awful hectic at the end.
Okay, no, that's fine.
With these missing things that we don't have, and we've gotta do something, and we gotta go to the board of finance, buy our deadline.
Okay.
So it's gonna get hectic at the end.
All right.
And.
I will trust you on this one. Okay, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get back.
Basically, if we miss it, I mean, too, too bad trouble, because, you know.
No, I mean, it would, it's the reverse, what if you put the sixty in and revisit it, that we could deduct it to the fifty? And this way, if we do miss it, I, I mean, I'm coming in as, as a newcomer, but I see a lot of maintenance issues and some things that are happening with the buildings that are very disconcerting. It's, it's, I mean, and I'm, I'm coming in with, uh, fresh eyes, and I just see some of these things that, um, it's not.
But my problem is, we're at, we're just going down item by item, and we're adding, and we have no idea what the total's gonna be. And then we're gonna get surprised at the end, a little while, and this thing went up a bunch.
Pleasantly surprise our boss.
You know, so I'd rather do it my way.
You're the boss.
No, uh, it's my-
I personally think it's, it's not the right approach, but that's me.
It's my opinion, not, not the boss.
I will refer to the historic, uh, way, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Have a note.
It's not yet, have a note.
As long as we got a note. If we didn't have a note, I would go with what you're saying.
Because it's easy to get momentum.
But as long as we got a-
No, I understand, I, I just, in my mind, if it's not approved, then we know we need to go back to address it, that's, that was all I was saying.
Because at the end, we're gonna have all these loose ends, that somebody didn't give us this, somebody didn't give us that.
Yeah, and then we're gonna be scrambled.
What do we do?
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, do we have a, a quick emergency meeting to put one item in or something?
But that's another reason why I wanted to do it on a Saturday, because then we, no interruptions, we can make a list of what we need, and Georgia can pull it all out, and then we have it, it just, I figured it would go a lot quicker. So.
Motion, Bob.
All right, Mr. DeVal, wait, are there numbers there?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to be set. Central services at one sixty-eight four twenty-six.
One second.
As long as we promise to go back, I'm third.
We got a big asterisk here.
All right. My favorite topic.
I'm gonna vote in here.
Oh, we don't, sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry. Okay, we first and second it, right?
Yeah.
And I discussed, and my comment, all in favor? Aye. All right.
So, uh, to possibly increase to what, um, to sixty?
Yeah, but I.
No, I, I put the note to the number.
On the note.
Yes.
On the note, to possibly.
Yes, well, we'll readdress the number, my, my thought now is sixty, book.
Right, okay.
Homework this week is to have a better number on there.
Okay.
But even if you come up with something between now and, let me say, something else, how are we gonna be done by next Saturday?
No, we might not be, but at, at least it gives me the week. You know?
Well, if we do, it's quick.
That's what we are aiming for, quick.
Accurate.
You put accurate.
Yeah.
Accurate, yeah, okay.
Accurate.
Insurances.
Why in competition?
Why?
We did that, what you said?
I think we, I think we need to bump it more, I had Chuck came yesterday.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, okay.
I hope he said, with the issues that we have right now, possibly twenty percent.
Really?
But he's gonna give us better numbers, he's gonna go back, because we talked to him, um, Alison and I sat down and talked to him. Um, and he's gonna crunch some numbers and get back to us, that he thought possibly twenty percent, and that brings it up to like four hundred and twenty.
And how come we only spent the week six ninety-seven?
Because, okay, the school, all the bills go to the school, Riddell School District seventeen. They, um, they get the information from Cigna, and then they send it to us, they pay all our bills. They, um, get the information, send it to us, and then we reimburse the school.
Okay.
I did call the school, and the information that they have so far, from July first to October fifteen, it's a hundred and nine thousand. However, it does not have all the expenditures from all the issues that we had from some employees. It will, it will increase, that's what Chuck, um, prediction was, so it's, I don't know.
Yeah, because they go into the pool, and, you know, the pool is gonna be higher.
And he's gonna come in and talk to you, Liz.
Okay.
Um, to give you some ideas. But you were so busy, um, yesterday.
Yep.
And, um, he, I didn't know he was coming, he just happened to, um, go by here.
Yeah.
And because we contacted him, he stopped by to see how we were doing and what information we needed, but he's gonna meet with you.
Okay.
Yeah, something, something that, you know, you work on, it's a big issue, it's, it's been, it's banned, and it's not gonna stop.
No, and the plans are gonna start, we're gonna have all the Cadillac tags, and, oh. No, and I, you know, fortunately, I have a background in that, to a certain degree, I'm not gonna sit here and say I'm an expert, but at least I have a good understanding.
Yeah, it's gonna be thorn inside, but it's big numbers.
Yeah, it's the ugly number that no one can control.
This, I think we increased this like by five percent only.
All right, so what do you want to, what do you guys want to do for now, then?
I would leave it the same for, for three sixty-seven five until we get a better understanding from the, the bills that will come in.
He, he, he's anticipating twenty-two percent.
That's what he's anticipating, but we, we don't know a hundred percent, he's gonna give us better numbers.
I would say this, this particular, you wouldn't vote on.
Yeah.
I wouldn't vote on it.
That's a big number.
It's a big number, yeah.
That's a big number.
You wanna wait, then skip it.
Well, we can do the other items, though.
Yeah, we'll do the other ones, let's do everything else, Georgia.
Okay.
Okay, the reason the seven thousand dollars is here is because we have five thousand dollar deductible, we have one incident, and this is where it should come out, uninsured loss, so, um, I, you know, seven thousand is a number. But at least one incident is five, you know, five thousand dollars is gone, so that leaves just two thousand for other various, we have a lesser deductible.
We have, yeah, we have five thousand on buildings and property, and five hundred on, um, motor vehicles.
Right. So that's why the increase to the seven, it's more realistic. Uh, group life insurance, is that because, as you can see, what we've expended thus far, I think it may be a good, um, I, I don't know where the contracts are, but it may be a good exercise to go up to bid.
Yeah, also, it depends on the population of the employees.
It, well, it depends on the population, depends if, is it group, uh, is it term with increasing every year, increasing premium, is it age-banded? You know, how is that, is it combined? Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to look at that, group life is traditionally inexpensive, but it wouldn't hurt to look at that.
Yep. But I think the eleven-five is a more realistic number.
Yep.
And social security, um, with the increase, that's going to increase as well, it was a hundred and twenty last year, we kept it the same. The retirement plan is, we got these numbers from the actuary.
Right.
Uh, company. That's what we need to put in.
And that's going out to R F P.
Uh, pension consultant, uh, we didn't hear back, did we, from, uh, from, uh, security?
Yeah, that's a flat fee, we pay that every year, it's, that's their, that's their record-keeping fee, yeah.
It increased just a little bit this year, about three, three hundred.
Yeah.
About fourteen, right?
So fourteen should cover, right, whatever the expenses is.
Did we, did we fire incentive?
No, we skipped it.
Oh, skipped it, gotcha.
No.
The fire incentive.
Oh, the, yeah, that, that's part of the formula.
Yeah. That's what the, uh, actuary sent to us, the numbers, is what we're gonna have to put in.
All right, is that because, because we, we've been through this many times, and it comes up, the other point, where the actuary has made assumptions and corrections, saying we're behind, but, and in the past, we haven't abided by that, and especially with the town pension, we've always, and then, and then it fluctuates, for example, we've been told we're four, five hundred thousand dollars behind.
Right.
And two years later, oh, no, we weren't really five hundred thousand dollars behind, you know? And so we haven't adhered to all that, and just thrown it to budget every time, because actuaries have been wrong, and anticipating how we're behind on potential pensions in the past, and they'll argue.
Last few, last few years, we've been adhering to what the actuary recommended.
Board of Finance one year, that's what scared me, was there was seven hundred thousand dollars or seven fifty that they said we were short, and we broke it out over a period of time, because it was many years of not funding it properly.
But it's still, it's still, it's still a projection.
It is a projection, and I think the, the most- It is a projection, and I think the most important thing is that we have to pay attention because it is an aging population, so we wanna make sure that we're okay. What's difficult with the existing plan, and it's just the way that that type is set up, it's really hard to see what the true actual expenses are. So, you know...
And you have raised increases as well.
Yeah, and getting the reporting that we need, we're just not getting what we need to look at those numbers. So I'm concerned, because it's a fiduciary issue for the town, in addition to that, there was a defined contribution plan that was supposed to be set up that wasn't, so we're in the process of getting all that done.
Yeah, I remember the seven hundred, it was in two thousand nine.
And we broke it out in the Board of, we did like two fifty, like, I think, one fifty, one fifty, and then that's...
But then they stopped it.
It's been done, like, that's been, it should be caught up, I just need to see.
But when you, but when we, when we put it in, you can't get it back, you know, so if the actuary's wrong by seven hundred thousand, once you fund it, the actuary's projections are incorrect, that's important.
No, but they, no, it isn't, no, it isn't. It's a fund, they look at the entire fund balance and how it's gonna fit the population. So let's say if the actuary was incorrect, then those numbers are gonna change for the next year, they could actually go down.
But if we put the money into it, it becomes, that becomes the employees.
It doesn't get divided, I don't believe.
It's in a pension.
Yeah, but I don't think it's allocated.
But it's gone, it's out of, it's out of the taxpayers' pockets, it's in a pension for the employees, you can't pull it out of a pension.
It's in a, it's like in a total fund.
Right.
Held, and then each piece is allocated, but it isn't actually put there until they actually go out.
Yeah, but if we're taking the money, we're expending it, we are writing a check to put into that pension.
We are, except...
And then once it's in that pension?
Yeah.
We can't get it back, so the actuary's incorrect in the projections, that money's gone.
It is gone for the year, but it doesn't mean that the actuary number doesn't drop for the next year.
Could.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, it could go up or it could go down. Once, you're right to the point that once it's there, it's there, but they're using that balance to figure out the calculations.
Yeah, there's many, I know other towns have tremendously overfunded pensions because of actuaries projecting out, being incorrect, funded.
But that's why we, I want a good handle on when we start...
Or so not overfund it.
No, but when we start...
According to their projections.
But even when, I can tell you with the fund balance that's there, it's not a big number. I can tell, you know, it's not a big number.
Because I just wanna make sure we're on, okay, not just saying, hey, the actuary wrote a piece of paper, just go away.
No, 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 but that's another reason why we have to look deeper into the detail, and that's what we've been working on.
And also, there are retired employees that are getting their pension out of those, of those numbers, so that comes into play when they do the...
Sure, sure.
Because it's easier to go back at a general fund and, hey, if it's underfunded. But once you overfund, you can't get it back.
No, you're right, but it will help a general formula down the road, but you have to remember, I think that number's a big number, because, again, we have an aging population and underperformance, and I think because we were short in some years, it hurt us, but it just, to be honest, there's a lot of detail there, and we're just, we don't have enough information from what we're getting.
What did they say about the bonding, the new regulations now, the government regulations, is that you do need to fund this appropriately.
Yeah, DOL will penalize you if it's not funded.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I think if we stay with the same number for what they have, we're in the process of RFP-ing and looking at that, and making sure, to your point, we're not putting more than we need to, and we're where we need to be, that's the goal.
Okay, state unemployment, we haven't used, thank goodness, but I still think it needs a placeholder here, in case there's a situation. Insurance consultant, the same number as last year, we haven't done anything at this point, and paid anything out, just, I kept paying out at the end of the year, or...
No, and I don't, I don't remember, to be honest with you, why we have the five hundred, I can't put my...
Well, we're not gonna vote on this anyway, so we can, we'll question that and ask, kinda look into that first, because back in thirteen, fourteen, it was thirty-seven hundred and eighty-five hours.
Right, but I know what that was.
What?
That was, CM was the consultant, but CM doesn't do any consultation anymore, and I don't remember the five hundred, why we put five hundred in there?
Okay, we can look at that. Workers' Comp is, these numbers were, we were under contract with Kerma, and it was a five percent increase on the premium, which is holding steady, I think, for three years.
Yep. And the same for the all other insurances.
And I have a question, why don't we break out the liability and then put the other insurances, like for the bonding, which would be minimal, you know what I mean?
Wanna break it out?
I think breaking it out, you can see what your liability would be.
Yeah, I mean, there was one bonding that we didn't need to have, and we put it under all other insurances, I mean, it didn't save us a lot of money, it was like three hundred and eighty dollars, but it was covered in the policy already, so we didn't need it.
Any, any...
So add a line?
Works for you, that's great.
Well, I think it's a, keep a better handle on the liability and take a look at it.
Okay. You wanna work on... You can work on that, add a line.
I did, yeah.
But would you just break out our bonding, or would you also put, you know, like...
All other insurance would be the little, the bonding, the, yeah, all the small items, the things that come in.
Georgia, do we need to vote to add a line in the budget?
I'll keep these down.
No, if you get to pass it, if it was outside the budget, yes.
No, what do you wanna call it?
Well, why don't we, we're not voting on this anyway, so why don't we come up with a line, we'll come up with a number, and then when we come back and this and it will...
Just a line, okay.
Is if that's okay?
Yep.
It's fine.
Okay, so we're not, we're not voting on this, all right.
Now, senior services, the same thing with the salaries.
I just wanna say that he's been doing a great job, doing a great job over there. He's fantastic with all his programs and things, he's a different series.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
It's me, because I've got, I'm trying to keep my ducks, but...
I'm here, I'm straddling, but, okay. So their request, if that's the case, is pretty consistent with, they went up on committee on the aging, I don't know if they plan on or anticipate doing some extra, do you know, offhand?
The committee on aging?
Yeah, I think they wanna do mailing, from what I remember.
They weren't gonna do it last year, but I...
Do a...
Do what, Georgia? Some mailing.
Send out some maybe brochure?
I didn't get any backup from them, but I, we received a phone call, they were gonna send in the backup, but I haven't gotten it yet.
All right, I don't wanna vote on something about backup.
But the special event fifteen hundred and the meals for the elderly, sixty-five, sixty, and sixty-nine ninety-five, so seventy-five hundred, looks like a realistic number, I didn't know.
That, yeah.
Yeah. Right now, it's twenty-five forty-nine.
So on the Club Sixty and Committee on Aging, we are waiting?
Yeah, just, I mean...
Yeah.
Okay, it's the process. Club Sixty remained the same.
Yeah.
Just Committee on Aging, that has changed.
That's the one?
Do you wanna leave it open, or vote on, pick a number, or vote on what we actually spent the last time, and change, or just not vote?
Well, they don't, they, their picnic is in the summer, so I don't know what they're gonna spend, but they...
Summer's spring.
Yeah, it's spring.
I would prefer not to, because some departments are good about getting their budget info in in summer, and I just need it, I need that to be consistent with that.
So we're waiting on that one.
Which one do we wait?
What's that?
The increase, the...
In the Committee on Aging?
We're not the Club Sixty, we're in...
Yeah, that one is the same.
That's the same.
Oh, it is the same? Yeah, but shouldn't they give you what they're gonna do? I mean, just because it's the same, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand that. I mean, when, when, all these departments...
Club Sixty, well, yeah, it's their Christmas, and their trips, that they do, their mystery trip.
Okay.
Those are their functions.
So my question to you is, with accountability with the funds that they get, they charge, right, for these trips? Don't they charge the whoever's going so much?
I don't know what they, I don't, no, I don't think...
They don't charge for everything, is what I remember. And B, if they do charge, it's not actual cost.
No, it ends up being...
They subsidize it.
Yeah, they subsidize that, I know.
Correct, correct, we establish just some kind of accountability to see what's going on, so you know how much the town is really funding on these things.
This is the one you're thinking about.
It's just a comment, and...
Well, no, then that's what I'm saying, I mean...
Special events.
Yeah, special events.
Those are the trips, and they charge.
And if it was like, so, that's what they did last year, right? Well, what did they do last year? And I just, I just, I like backup, I like detail, I like to see what's there.
I like to see the programs, I mean, we, again, I...
Why don't you call them in?
Yeah.
Have a conversation.
Just to, just so we know, I mean, I'm not trying to take away anything.
Call them in to come in and tell you, because...
Yeah.
I can't tell you, I don't know. So call, what, Club Sixty and Committee on Aging?
Yep. Gloria's actually coming in to see me, so I'll, and Beth.
They'd love to come in.
Ask them then, too.
So community center, we're going down zero?
No, just don't put anything, I don't wanna vote on it, let's just leave it blank.
No, I mean, no, community center, Captain.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, community center, zero.
All right, I'll make a motion, maybe, make it on zero to board.
Second, Bob, Liz?
Sure, any discussion? All in favor? All right. No, it's okay.
Okay, Veterans Museum is five hundred dollars for supplies, that's it, everything else was moved to public building.
How does this line up with a letter that...
They sent us? Yeah, so I guess I talked to them, and the plumbing problem was fixed, I mean, that's a community center issue, right? I guess that when, I don't know, the copula that's on the building got moved around, and I'm not sure if it had to do with snow removal or not, but Phil's crew went and tired all that up, so that got fixed.
So we satisfied, is your question?
So we satisfied, now, the only other issue was, there's a generator that's down there, that's what that was about, so, they don't need the generator, but it needs to be serviced, because, you know, if it's not serviced, then it would just break. So, we may have an extra generator to use somewhere, so I had told Debbie to have the person who services our generators to go down and do that, and then we just, I need to get a handle on, like, equipment, and what, what things are where, you know, because if a generator's sitting there, and somebody else needs a generator, well, it's silly to have that generator sitting there. But I pretty much satisfied what they needed, and then the other issue was, they wanted to know if the Little League needed to have as much space, and actually, the Little League might not need to have as much space, so we're working on that, too.
So the generator, do we need to put this generator in this budget, though? In the servicing?
No, because that's in the, that's part of the building and maintenance repair that comes out of there. Okay?
And has it always been the case out of building maintenance?
Yeah, all the buildings.
Yeah. So, I think for them, for five hundred for their supplies is all they really need to have in there.
I'll make a motion to improve five hundred dollars, see if they can recommend it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
This is the last one?
Okay, yep.
This is an easy one, isn't it?
Hooray. Oh, yeah, it's an easy one behind it.
It's consistent with what was last year.
They do a great job, these guys do. Fantastic job.
I'll make a motion, we kept thirteen, five, great.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Sean, you're not gonna stay for the final question?
What?
Fail on health, come on.
You got a draw, though.
All right, all right. Stop where you wanna go, keep going.
Well, maybe we should skip around, so that any, anyone, Sean, should be a part...
I agree.
You know, we do, but if it's...
Something easy, that's a zero, or whatever, we get it done, is that, are you okay with that, Sean?
Maybe we should go and...
What do you need? Oh, yeah, let's call them.
I mean, we're almost through this general...
I don't have it here.
And I don't know if we wanna get through the public stake week.
Yeah.
There's not, couldn't be too much in there, it's a problem, but there's also not a lot of information, too, like, you haven't gotten the numbers from State Week yet, I don't think.
Actually, we did.
I think, I think Georgia did, but I don't know, but you know what, let's, let's just do this, let's...
We never do.
All right, let's agree to go through, we'll go through conservation. You wanna do fire department, or you wanna just...
Well, I don't know, economic development.
No, 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 I know, we're gonna skip health. Yeah, let's just do economic development. But I need her to know, did they give us backup for two thousand dollars for marketing? So... Because the rule is no backup.
Other than the fact it was submitted something?
No, I wanna know that we have, like, some departments have not just either abide by, heard of line of getting it in, or they just have no backup, and if there's no backup, then how can we vote on a budget? I don't remember, so that's why I prefer to wait for Georgia.
A lot of comments about that.
Yeah.
All right, let me take all this stuff through, right?
I would say that, that's your capacity, but we'll get to you...
Yeah, are we gonna...
We'll be put in, yes, we're gonna update.
Oh, yeah, is that what's gonna go in the book, though?
Well, that's up to you, I mean, we're...
Are you, I mean, wouldn't it be easier if they just bound it, and you left it here, and it's just done?
Yeah.
So give it to Georgia, Sean, and or leave it right here, and then we'll make sure that gets done.
In his book.
Yes, because you don't wanna, we don't wanna duplicate it, right? I mean, let's just be smart about this. And then, does next Saturday work for you?
Next Saturday, that should be able to stay longer.
Okay, nine thirty work, good, too, okay.
All right, thanks, yeah.
Have a good weekend. Does that work for you? He's got all the...
That's important.
It is important.
My basketball is coming later in the day, I guess.
Yeah, but isn't he, isn't he, oh, yeah.
John?
No, exactly.
Oh, you're... Oh, you made doggies.
But isn't he doing soccer? Isn't he coaching soccer?
Coaches everything.
We used to do that.
You know, yeah, he, he, he's in baseball.
Yeah, I know he's in baseball.
He doesn't do soccer, because he does fall ball.
Oh, yeah.
He does spring and fall.
Yeah.
And the basketball.
Yeah.
Well, it's got the three kids and.
No, I know.
Two of them are going in two different directions, you know. His son is a good baseball player.
Yeah, no, I know his son is a good ball player.
And the daughter is the one that's into the basketball.
Yeah. No, gratefully, I had the three, but the twins were always on the same team, so that made life a lot easier.
Yes.
That's important. Is that your charger? That would be very important.
Yelled at, I hate.
Well, we're going to skip economic development because we don't have.
Shaun, you didn't sign.
I think he did. I think he went with him.
Oh, he did?
I think so.
Okay, all right. So what time's your basketball game?
I don't know, I don't want to this week. Next week.
Next week?
Two.
Two?
Two forty-five.
Yeah, but we'll go like, we do 9:30 to like wander, you know. We'll see. Well, I mean, I want to get it done, but I don't want to rush that. I want to make sure we do it ready.
No, I, I expect section.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I don't think it's your birthday either. I think it's a different.
No, and I know, I mean, and that's the other thing. I mean, traditionally Shaun's had to call in and I just think it's better to do it in person.
Economic development is hard. That we're not going to do.
And this is better. Georgia, do you have backup for this marketing for economic development? Do you know what that's for?
Oh, I think Liz wrote something up on that, didn't she?
Yeah, I do. Sorry.
That's okay. What else?
And.
Yeah, I'll, I'll print the whole thing for land use as well.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
And conservation.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, she has a lot of dialogue.
I know she does, yes.
Which I, I guess is back though.
Yeah, yep, no, that's, that's.
So while, while you're doing that, I wrote the paper, so you guys can sign, so you don't have to do it again.
Okay.
Do you have pens?
Yep. Does it need to be black or can it be blue?
No, I think blue. She didn't say. So you're first right there and then Bob underneath there. And Robin. Robin will sign Monday.
Okay. Didn't we just sign this?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, and then they lost the paper.
No, that was missed. This portion, so you signed here.
Yes. Oh, okay.
She needed also that.
Okay, got it. Got it?
Do you want me to take Shaun's and if you go on something, put it in?
Yeah, I probably want to do that, yeah.
It makes sense, because that's why.
Right, no, that would make sense, yeah. So. Got it?
Yep.
Just to make it easier.
Yeah.
If I can find this methodology here.
This way?
I think he turned it.
Yeah, I think he did.
Yeah. That's done.
So he clipsed.
Yeah, as he goes. That's why I figured the clips would make life easier.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I need if I should go get a red pen, so he knows that I did it.
Why don't you use a pencil?
Okay.
Pass that. Do you have one?
Yep.
And then that way he'll, he'll know. And then if he needs to change anything, he can do it. Because if you do it in red, then he might not like. How's the new phone's working out? Pardon me? How's the new phone's working out?
Actually, I don't know. They put, it was Friday, so he's coming in Monday.
I was just ignoring it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not sure. We'll see.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's going to be a lot better.
Call our D word. Very nice.
One in here.
It is. It's what it can't see that.
Oh, yeah, you better take a water.
She's got everything, the planning and zoning, EDC and all of those, so.
Yep.
Did them all together.
Okay.
Okay. So this is all set?
Yes.
Thank you. Of the note that she has about the code that they're going to vote.
Yeah, in February, yeah, that I knew.
Yep.
And, and I think it's going to stick close to saying, there was a possibility it was going to change, but I don't think it's going to change by a lot. It would, it almost would have changed by a lot. I don't think it is some cheap.
All right, so the question was on the economic development.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, she does have the explanation on the marketing.
Yep. Are you good with that?
What other backup did she have? It says here, see backup. I don't know what she, I didn't see anything.
I saw what she has here. I mean, it's.
Under the land use?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Well, for this particular item, I saw what she has here.
Yeah, okay.
So it's probably not going to happen until more towards the beginning of 2017, but I think that's why she's putting it in there. Any questions?
Where are we at?
We're at economic development.
$2,000.
$2,000 for marketing and then there's comments that.
There's comments.
Yep. Get us backup. Do you have any questions about that? Okay.
So we're at $2,000.
Yes, I think we, I think that's a doable number. So I'll make a motion to accept $2,000 as economic development budget.
Okay.
Do you have any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, land use. She put anything on this. She starts this. All right, so the salaries stayed with the two and a half, right?
Right.
Yeah. And the secretary? Same thing?
Uh, yes.
So wetlands. Supplemental payroll came off, right?
I'm doing your Utah.
No, no, that's, that's supplemental payroll.
Yeah, she's concerned, she's concerned that.
She said this plan was moved to the.
Yeah, so that was my question.
Right.
And it was, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so she did, we took that off her budget.
Yep.
No, I saw that.
And maps and regulations, 500, she's down from last year, so she knows primarily what she's going to need.
Yep.
I think they've digitized, you know, a lot of, a lot of this stuff.
And then there was a maintenance for $500 a month, I mean, a year, sorry.
Yeah, for the. Main Street Center. Is that what you're talking about or the one up above?
I'm talking the one up above.
Okay, maps and rigs.
What is Connecticut Main Street Center for 500? Do we know?
That I don't know.
She doesn't have a note.
She, last year, she had 500 and there was $2,000 for technical assistance.
Yep.
So that is gone now because apparently it's in, you know, it was set up.
Yep.
And the $500, Connecticut Main Street, I mean, I'm familiar with some of the, they have, they provide services, you know, for a main street. And if she needs something, I'm assuming that's more like a dues.
Like a membership.
Yeah, a membership dues. I don't know why she kept it separate, or she doesn't really have another.
Yeah, there isn't anything for dues.
So she put it in as a line.
Yeah, she doesn't have any, like dues and.
Right, right. Professional development is $1,000 like last year.
Yeah, because it's new. Okay, so she took it out.
Yeah, because apparently they set something up, whether it was software, I don't know if it was software. This, this Connecticut Main Street Technical Assistance.
I have to look at last year.
Yeah, she already knows what, what it was.
Okay.
Right now, the, for this year, there's nothing spent out of there.
Right.
So we may.
No, and it looks to me like it's new, Georgia.
No.
So. Last year, on that page. We can do. So we can just check with her and see.
Okay, well, this is a technical assistance opportunity from Connecticut Main Center, Main Street Center, to conduct a workshop with stakeholders in an area to address opportunities and challenges in development of land. The Planning and Zoning Commission and myself would like to work with the EDC and with landowners and merchants in the Tylerville area to examine how to attract development to the area. More specifically, they will look at the corridor on 154 from the Seabrook and head on to Route 82 for development. Mixed use and design. This area includes the Drane Brook's property, which is nine acres, and the property at the merchant house, both of which are for sale. So that's what that is.
All right, I'm really waiting. If she didn't put it here.
No, that was a one-time fee.
One-time fee.
Okay.
That was a one-time.
That's why there's nothing for this year.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the Connecticut Main Street Center. I'm not talking about.
Oh, okay, the 500.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
So we'll just ask her. I just want to know what that is.
It's an annual membership.
And professional development.
She's keeping it the same. I think she, she should, yeah, she's going for. The, for certain.
Yeah, she told me that.
On the town planners certification, is that what it is?
Yeah, there were a couple of other things that she said she didn't have a chance to attend this year that she wanted to do. So she told me about those.
But it's also for the, her whole department.
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think there was something, I know there was something she, I think she wanted Maureen to go to.
So it's the same as last year?
And then the mileage?
Yeah, mileage, she increased it a little bit, but I don't know. Is she anticipating more development?
Or? I think she is. I think she's thinking that there's going to be more meetings and more things involved. And she increased it.
Oh, with the PO?
Yeah, so with, I mean, she only increased it by 500 miles, which isn't a lot. So.
So we're not going to vote on that?
Yeah, I want to hold off. I want to check with her and see what that is. Okay, so that's in the back burner. Okay, conservation.
And her question on, on this, it was answered previously, right, of the coordinator?
Yep.
The grant, the grant?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So we don't need to worry about that.
Right.
That's right, it's zero.
Right.
Yep.
Now, conservation, Gail usually sends stuff in.
And she didn't?
I don't have anything from Gail. Probably I'd, I'd have to call her.
All right, we'll have to wait on that one, too.
Yeah, she's pretty good. You can send things stuff in.
There you go. We'll just hold on. Do you want to stop, Bob? What do you want to do? A little more? Okay.
You want to wait on certain things that Shaun will be here?
I know, like fire, I don't want to, I don't know, some of these bigger budgets.
Yeah.
I think I would prefer to wait.
Want to do animal control?
Yeah, that might be an easy one. Let's do that one.
Animal control?
215. I think.
About what?
Please.
I think I'd want to wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, and all. I think we can wait for Shaun to do those. Okay, so dog warding, same thing, two and a half, right? And then dog tags is all, looks like it's the same. She dropped her expenses. It's probably not a bad thing. Do we know why? Why so much?
On which one was?
On dog warding expense.
Oh, that was kind of a one-time item in 15, 16 and.
So she went to it in '14.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because she had to go to school for stuff, but I don't know if she's getting some kind of a grant this year. I think she was late applying last year. She might be, she might have time to apply for this coming.
She might be, she might have time to apply for this coming.
Okay.
She still needs to take those courses.
Right.
But she only put seventy-five, so I have to go by what she says.
No, I know, yeah, and I did talk to her a little bit about that.
Oh, you did, okay, okay.
Alright, pound expense seems to be the same, and then miscellaneous. She kept that the same, too, but she's only expended, she hasn't really expended a lot there.
Yeah, that, that includes all her pound stuff.
Okay.
And it all depends what issues come up.
Alright, well, she kept it the same, I mean, she kept everything the same, so.
Oh, no, pound expenses are above miscellaneous expenses. It includes also vet bills?
Yeah.
So it all depends if we have.
A situation.
Situation, right.
She's so busy though, probably, you know. Okay.
Bob, where you got?
Just got one number thrown.
Twenty-four, sixty-eight.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Motion?
Make a motion to accept the animal control budget for twenty-four thousand six hundred eighty dollars.
All set.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Did we, did you get the budget on this?
I did.
Okay.
Yesterday.
That's what I thought, I saw it come in, I wondered.
Yes, and I probably have to print that information for you because, yeah, he did go. Did you?
I printed it, I think it's on my desk, you want me to go and see if I can? Oh, I can, I can print it, so.
Yeah.
Wow, I didn't realize we were gonna get that far.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, I saw this come through yesterday, so. Candy does it in upstairs. I know, it do. A lot easier. Kind of tiny, I apologize, I couldn't get it.
That's okay.
He had it, yeah, he had it, it was coming like in four pages. So he's getting a grant.
So I'm confused, he's, he's got, um.
Twelve increase.
He's netting this out, which, um. I don't know, this is what he's done in the past, but he's netting it out, which is really hot, and you can't really take the revenue, the reimbursement.
Right.
If it's on the revenue side, you have, that's what the reimbursement is.
Yeah.
So maybe we should pass on this and take a hard look at it, because it was sent at the last minute.
Yeah, it just came yesterday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we should hold off.
Hold off, yeah, yeah, just come look at that Monday. Alright, fire marshal? Yeah, let's do fire marshal. Okay, so salary, same thing, too.
Yeah.
Deputy marshal. Just use. Up. Professional development. Is there training or something they probably need to do?
Yeah, he takes courses every year.
What is, what's the equipment, Georgia? What do you know?
Try to remember what he received in, in the past, if he needs tape when they have a fire, that's one item that I can recall. I'm gonna look at the, for other stuff he needed. He got his camera, he had the camera last year.
Yep.
He did get it.
I see the deduction, I was like, that had to be the five hundred dollar difference.
So this is where it would be nice to have the detail, to have the computer here, so I can hook up and.
Alright.
To look up all the different.
Alright, so why don't we just, since we're after twelve, why don't we do that? And then I could try to see if we could do that, I mean, you, I'm happy to let you use my hotspot, or you can just do that, it just makes it easier. You can log in. Can you do that?
Just from here?
Yeah, I have my, I have my own personal hotspot.
On your cellphone?
Nope, I have like an actual, like little thing that you can hook into.
Okay, but I don't know how that works.
Would that help you to be able to call things up? So it's just like having internet service wherever you go, so just because there's not a line here.
Computer you're gonna use.
Do, do you have a laptop that we can use, or not?
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't have BMSI.
It doesn't, alright.
No, Dennis was gonna set it up, and he'll come in Monday, he tried to set it up Thursday night.
Okay.
But he couldn't do it.
Alright, do you think if he does that for us?
No, I mean, if I have a laptop here, we have wireless, we, I could connect.
Connect, okay. Alright.
Unless you want me to go and print it, I mean, I can check it out.
No, I think, I think we're good. I think, 'cause some of these other budgets, I really, you know, looking at them, I don't really wanna do them without Sean.
Okay.
You know, there's a change, we don't have KX anymore, we're gonna Valley Shore.
Right.
You know, building department seems, I guess we can probably tackle building department because it looks like salaries the same, assistance the same, contractual development.
Or you can put the numbers where you feel comfortable, like, for example, okay, there is a question on equipment on the fire marshal, but if there, like, membership dues, for example, if there's no question, we could put those numbers in and then just leave the ones that we have a question on, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I would just rather have you at this point, I think, because you didn't expect to get this far.
Mm-hmm.
Just have you just, we just stop and take the time, and then you can just have all that.
Okay.
Because I just think it would just be a more efficient means of our time.
Yep.
And, you know, we're, I think we rolled along pretty well today.
Ooh, we're gonna do building department in the.
Yeah, let's do building, because I think we can.
Okay.
So two and a half increase, same thing here, contractual services are same. Professional development. I mean, it's a fifty dollar difference in dues and membership are seventy-five dollars, eighty-five dollars, eighty-five dollars. Mileage, so mileage went up a lot. Well, that's because.
Well, you can see where.
Oh, this is the problem, alright, yeah, because he was getting the stipend and she changed it. Yeah, which is right, that should be right. Because we were going through that money like water.
Yeah.
So, just give me a second. Something else. So they said.
She does have an explanation of the, um, the equipment here?
Yep. I just wanna do something really quick.
Yeah, and, um, on the publication, she's got the explanation.
Yeah. Okay, hold on. I just wanted to see something.
And Liz probably, I have to go over it with Liz to understand about the new plan. The RIS availability, you know, the RIS is just different. Right? She says the pension plan's not available, it is available, but it's just different.
It's a different plan.
Right, different plan. Right? Frank, not the pension one?
Yep, but it's not set up.
Right.
Right?
And this is gonna have to play out because you have a new person that you gotta go after, and if you've got a.
And I'll be honest with you, she's doing interviews right now.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we might be able to have a lot better number on that, so maybe in retrospect.
We can't do that.
We should just wait, I, I mean, if we're gonna have the number, you know why, in a short period of time, I mean, we might not hit it right, but I would feel more comfortable to go through this exercise and know what that number is, because if we do need to increase it.
Alright, so.
You know, and even when I look at like the mileage here, she has the old rate, not the new rate, and not that it's gonna make a huge difference, it's only three cents a mile, but. Alright, so why don't we call it?
So that's staying behind.
Yeah. Why don't we call out a diet? Want to use thing?
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.